This time approves public schools, regular virtual and physical meeting administration building, three oh nine Northwest East Street, Ziegler Publix seven four four six two. Meeting to order on Tuesday as the fourteenth twenty twenty at seven o'clock P M. I don't know if I need to read all of this. Those present are David Huggins, Brett Lorm, Kenny Whitson, Jennifer Turner, and Susan White. It's time we move on to recognition of child nutrition staff.
Continuing with our recognitions this year, this month, we want to recognize several staff members from our child nutrition department. In lieu of what's been going on, services have been different, child nutrition services have been different. And this group has really solved and found a way to get food to our kids. We started off serving, I believe it was right under a hundred, like the first day we served. Now we're serving over five hundred students per day, two meals a day. So there's over a thousand meals going out. Several of those are being delivered, everybody else is just coming up, drive up service and they're dropping them off to them. So it's been a big benefit to those in our community and outside of the community, of course. We've got four, I think it's four routes that are going out. And I talked to Dr. Kettles this morning, his route now takes him three hours, once they start to finish. They've sped up the whole process. What they've got now is they've got, we've got a whole list of volunteers that have become. So right now, we've got plenty of people, I know people have asked, hey, what can I do to help? Things are going on right now, we've got plenty of volunteers and they've got a real good system. When they're, when they're at the end of the day today, they set all the bags out and they pack them full of all the dry goods. These five members come the next morning, get there at seven, cook the hot meals, whatever needs to be cooked. We add those to the bags and then those deliveries are going out about eight fifteen. And before it, we weren't going out till nine or nine thirty. So they've really expedited that, it's been a good deal. So if you know anybody still missing out on that, we're serving Monday through Friday, eight to noon at the middle school cafeteria. But five certificates we will pass out, state of public schools board of education hereby recognizes Laura Patterson for dedicated service and a positive attitude during the COVID nineteen pandemic in creating and implementing a new schedule to ensure that students receive meals. Also Michelle Thornton, Lynn Stubblefield, Sandy Russell, and Shannon Webster.
Did you say y'all are delivering those or do they pick up?
Correct.
Okay.
Both.
Oh, both, okay.
Correct, yep. Most of them are being delivered.
That's amazing. Okay, this time we move on to the approval of the minutes from the number one, the regular meeting on March ninth twenty twenty.
Make the motion for approval of minutes.
A second.
For each minute, each, wouldn't it? The special meeting and regular.
Okay. Jennifer?
A second.
Seconds, okay. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, March ninth twenty twenty, and the special meeting, March twenty sixth twenty twenty. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. This time we move on to the approval of encumbrances.
This is one I do want you to pay attention to, number one through three seventy-five through three eighty-one. Most of that is typical stuff you've seen, but the very bottom one, number three eighty-one, pretty big ticket item right there. What that will allow us to do if we approve, if we approve these encumbrances is to order enough Chromebooks devices where every student and staff member in this district will have one. We're over five hundred short, we've got different needs at the early childhood than we do at the secondary level. So we've got bids back from four different companies to get a hundred and seventy-five touchscreen Chromebooks. The secondary students don't need those as much, they're more keyboard. Well, think of your early childhood, they haven't learned those keyboard skills, so they need that touchscreen. The touchscreen is a little bit more, so would like to ask for approval of that. We can get those in, when we talked to them two weeks ago, they said, hey, we can have them to you in a week. It takes us a week to turn them around. Really what this would secure is having them here so we could get them to staff so they could make sure that they have the capacity in terms of next year and have the ability to, if we want to fully utilize these, we would have that ability for the next five years.
Sorry to ask a stupid, stupid question, but I don't know what a Chromebook is, I've never even heard of it.
Think of it as a laptop without, without all the insides and the storage capabilities. So where your typical laptop might be a thousand dollar laptop, this is a two hundred and fifty dollar laptop that just has minimal storage. You can download some assignments.
Wi-Fi, Wi-Fi.
Yes, everything, you know, whether you're on Google Classroom.
On version of Office and like, like it inside it.
Well, I mean, everything we've been using, we've been all, we've been using the Google suite for it, so you're using Google.
It's just equivalent of it, kind of Office, Microsoft Office.
Different, yes, different version, where here, everything you can, you can upload and keep on the cloud per se. So that's why it's a lot less expensive, there's not as much inside of it. So a Chromebook is, looks just like a laptop, you wouldn't tell the difference until you try to save a bunch of files on there, it just doesn't have that capability.
Now, do you have that, we don't have that in action item, correct?
Correct, once we approve the encumbrance, that's approving the P O, that's going to allow us to spend the money. What, we've got different bids, C D W is who, all of these four companies we've purchased with before. But C D W, who Dennis Craig tells me we've done the most business with, and he feels the best about them, they actually came back with the lowest bid. The thing about it as well, I want you to know that what we already had budgeted.
How much are they at fees?
A hundred and sixty and then two sixty for the touchscreen ones. And then in there is also, for all five hundred and fifty of them, twenty-five dollars, which gives us the management system and the Google, where we can load and unload things on there, so.
Is this for students and teachers?
And staff, where every teacher, it's hard for the, if we just got them for the students, the teachers need one to be able to know how to use them with their students.
Is it something that they take home?
Yep, we're going to check it out like a textbook.
Okay.
And people will talk about, wow, you're going to check out a computer kit too. Typically, we might check out over six hundred dollars of textbooks to kids and we don't bat an eye on that. I'm, I'm not going to bat an eye on a two hundred and fifty dollar Chromebook, so.
A lot of schools do it.
Yes.
Personally, if they didn't have Wi-Fi or internet at home, it'd be.
Correct, well, you can upload, you bring it to school, we have Wi-Fi here, we can put Wi-Fi on the buses. When you come here, you upload your assignments, they're all there, you take them home, they're still on there, they have limited storage capability. You can't go on there and search the internet and do all kinds of things unless you're on Wi-Fi.
Will we get any type of grant or anything?
Well, yes, here's what I was going to tell you. We had a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars already budgeted out of our Title One in Indian Ed accounts to go towards this. We've, so really, the overage that we would have to, to come up with is about fourteen thousand dollars. What we're getting ready to get, getting, getting ready to get here in the next three weeks, they told us two to four weeks last week, was our public school stimulus money, which is going to be about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that will more than cover the fourteen thousand dollars that were short in our budget to allocate for this technology, so.
Will you ultimately have software fees for downloading assignments and things like that?
No. The thing that you might think about, some schools do some, this is the difference in places, that you'll go one to one to check this out. An insurance program, some schools absorb that cost. I mean, because if I didn't, if I didn't charge you a, a, a fee to check out six hundred dollars of Chrome, I mean, of textbooks, should I charge you a fee to check you out a two hundred and fifty dollar Chromebook? Some schools are putting that on parents to say, hey, you can buy a, a insurance package for twenty to forty dollars. That way, if something does happen to that device, it's covered.
Even if it's lost?
Lost, stolen, broken, the bus runs it over, your sister hits it with a baseball, I mean, any of those, it's how you write your policy. I know ours in Eden was a three-step deal, the first one was covered by your plan, the second one, you had to pay a bigger deductible, and the third one, you lost your device for the year. We just didn't, if you had, it's like a three-strike deal. Again, different districts, different policies, so we would have to think about, again, we don't have to check them out. I would imagine that the early childhood center, at, at the first three or four grades, they stay in the classroom. And it might be something that stays in the classroom at the secondary and they're checked out in an as-needed base. If you have a project and you want to check it out for a day or a week or a month, you have the ability to do that. If you don't, some parents don't want those devices at home, well, then they would stay at school and we would have that ability to do it.
We're kind of finding out, especially with what's going on now, that it's a problem when kids can't do homework over the internet or on a computer or whatever per se, because unless if they could download it before they went home, that would make a lot, then you would have to have internet, you can still do all your assignments.
Well, I mean, there's, there's a lot of discrepancy and differences is what, what's going on right now in Oklahoma education between now and May eighth and May fifteenth. Some schools have been one-to-one and they, they've had Wi-Fi checked out and they're not, I mean, they're missing a beat because they're not interacting like they used to, but they're not missing as big a beat as those people who are mailing packets home and saying, hey, you're on your own. So this gives us the ability to start, our kids and our staff to start learning how to use technology in a way that we can help our kids educationally. So again, looks like a hundred and forty on here, had a hundred and twenty-six already budgeted. Again, we've got over three hundred thousand coming in with stimulus in the next two weeks. So talking to all of our principals and our federal programs director and technology director, it's a recommendation that they would wish we would go that way so they could start preparing their staff and we could start helping our kids. So would be asking you to approve these encumbrances so then we can put a P O in place and do that. So a little different, when we put this together, we didn't have these bids in or else we would have wrote it as accept a bid on an action item, but now I'm just asking you to approve the encumbrance and we will put a P O to C D W for that exact amount.
C D W.
Yes. If there's anything, I think the only other thing in there in the building, our, we've been, look at it one way or the other. Our, our lawnmower fleet is better than it's ever been because here lately it's been its worst. Our lawnmower at the grade school went out on us, so we ended up getting another one from the mail.
He's not actually the deputy clerk.
Deputy clerk, and there's no spot for another member, does what do we?
Do we need to add something in there?
Does he need to sign, we just need to mark deputy clerk out and put member name, sign that?
Yes, just do that.
That's what I did, yeah.
I did, right here?
Yeah, just mark that out and put it in.
And just initial right where you, next to where you scratched it, that's what you know, that you've approved the scratch out.
We didn't get a service. Get our deputy clerk, get another deputy clerk, as many as a clerk.
On the child nutrition, the food handlers, that's, you had to pay that to get everybody?
Yes, and what we, yes, for, for our vote, the only stipulation they've said to, to be, period, even in the cafeteria, while there's food service going on, you have to have a food handlers permit. So we've asked anybody who's wanted to volunteer to do that, we've taken on that cost, it's five dollars to do that. So so far, there's a hundred and thirty-five dollars coming out of child nutrition to be able to allow us to have volunteers that last three years.
To get the link to, to do that.
Lindy was sending those out, yes.
Send it to me, you've got my email there.
Feel free to do it, it'll take you about two hours and we might not use you, so.
Oh, that'd be okay, at least I'd be available.
It's, it's there for three years, so if something happens, you've got that for three years.
Make the motion for approval of encumbrances.
I'll second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to approve the encumbrances as listed. Do I need to say this, the C D W, or just?
Once you approve the encumbrances, as long as you've approved them all as listed.
I don't want to be paying, I just want, if you could just briefly describe each one of these, just, I mean, I'm just generally speaking. All of them, three seventy-five, you already got three eighty-one.
Beasley Technology is a group who helped us onboard our new firewall, that was the cost to do that.
Franklin Enterprises.
I'm drawing a blank on Franklin, I didn't bring my notes in here, Melissa, does that ring a bell?
I'm sorry, I'm just not familiar with.
TSA Stores, Technology Student Association, Mrs. Hurst's Club. Rosenstein, Justin Ringgold is our lawyer that we've been consulting with. Stigler Mellon Company, you see specifically what that one is. And then Chris Weir is the drone tech that repairs things for, for Reagan.
Okay.
And I'll have to get back with you on Franklin, not be able to find that in a little bit. It's three seventy-six.
Didn't hear anything good at the gym floor, does it?
No, I don't want him to speak, I'm trying. Did you not want to move with me last Thursday? Look, we go, I take notes and I didn't bring him in here with me, so I'll have to follow up.
On the Franklin?
Yeah, that's fine, we can move on, I just.
People, that doesn't sound anything to you, does it?
Yeah, that stuff.
I'm looking for where people have stuff embedded in this and you can't see.
Might have to worry about for that.
Yeah, I'm good, we can move on if you want, that's just, that's good enough for now.
All right, I had a motion from Kenny.
Yes, make motion for approval of encumbrances.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Okay, let's kind of move on to other financial reports.
Have it on the big screen, so I'm going to ask you to turn around a little bit again. Again, looking from last year, this year, minimal difference on payroll, up on bills and all of that. Little over ten thousand was we, we've early ordered, we've already started stripping and waxing, so we got all those maintenance supplies in early. Again, that's about eleven thousand dollars worth of supplies. The firewall was just under ten thousand, that's our computer software firewall that protects us from people coming in from the outside as well as our web filter. And then the other four thousand on that difference was our instructional leadership framework that we've been taking eight staff members to Oklahoma City monthly. And then now our last one's going to be a virtual deal. So that's where the difference is, the twenty-four thousand from last year to this year. Still feel really good about where we are. Again, when you look at monthly cash forward on here, you see it a little bit down. It's one of those deals we've talked about all year long, when you look at month to month, well, just last week, we've already collected almost fifteen thousand dollars that last year we collected in the month before. So when you see a difference from month to month, you kind of got to look at the year. So it's when we put our claims in, last year we put them in a couple of weeks earlier, this year we had them a couple of weeks late. So the claims are going to show up on the upcoming one. Trying to think of anything, yeah, forty-eight thousand last year, next month. Oh, and then we expect next month to be down too because taxes have been postponed, you know, the collection of those taxes. If they don't, when, when they get them, we get them, so if it's a delay there, it's going to be a delay here. So even though we're catching up on some of our claims, those tax collections might not show up. And we anticipate those moving forward to be even, to be even less.
That previous slide, was that year-to-date?
Right here, yes, for month to month, last year nineteen, this year twenty, month to month. Unless there's anything specific, I don't know if there's anything in there that you guys saw that you want to talk about specifically, but everything else is pretty close. Or if we get into it on the, when we, our budget revision, it was less than three hundred dollars revised. There's several pluses or minuses, if you looked at it, the things that were in bold were any differences, some of them were up, some of them were down, but the overall for the year, I think it was like two hundred and seventy-three dollars difference. So we're right on track budget-wise with everything.
Everybody want good with everything? Susie? Franklin Enterprises was the people that looked at the mixer at the cafeteria.
That's right, we had a mixer go out at the middle school. Great big one. And it was, I think they came from Fort Smith, is that right? It's the only one we could find to work on and they came over here and told us and we were able to fix it in-house, fortunately. But it did cost us that to get them to come over here and give us a, a look. Thank you.
Everybody good? Okay, at this time, the word of education invites public comment at this point in the regular meeting. Comments concerning agenda items in accordance with policy V E D dash R, no one present for that. Information items, A, superintendent's report.
A little different, a little sad when I started filling this out because usually, we've been around for a month and as I go around, I'm able to take pictures and add some of those in there. Well, we haven't been going around and nothing's been going on, so there's no pictures in our slide this month. Legislative update, new rules and a lot of things, I think, I mean, I'm going to go through this fast. If we want to talk more, you let me know, but the big thing about the new emergency rules that are in effect, all these things that we were worried about with regulations in terms of, there's no more testing for students. Well, we had a lot of attendance regulations, those are all off. There's what's called, when, when they track our attendance and they give us average daily attendance and they factor that for the year, there's a percentage we need to hit, well, they stopped that on March twelfth for all schools. So whatever your rate was then, you're stuck, there's no penalizations after that. And then the other thing, they still haven't came out with final determination on, but they're looking at recommending those people with emergency certifications, granting them an additional year because they've suspended all testing right now, same thing with driver's ed and stuff like that. Well, it's not, driver's ed is not just a school deal, there's some transportation department, there's some state statute deals, so they don't have the final answers, but with the emergency teaching certificate, it's kind of in a nutshell there right now. If the district says there's a need and they can say, we would like to have this person back, they anticipate being able to allow third year and that's stopped. It had been only you can have an emergency certificate for two years, but due to lack of testing venues, that's the other thing. I talked about the stimulus money before, we anticipate in, in the mid, the three hundred and fifty range. It says, they said approximately eighty-three percent, I've heard schools anywhere from seventy-four to eighty-five. So we're guessing about three hundred and fifty thousand, could be three twenty, could be three sixty. And then budgetary wise, I mean, what they're telling us, what the governor's telling for us, what the Senate and the House are both saying adamantly is they're not cutting budget, budgets to core public services, they're not cutting public ed. While the thing, that's good news to us, but what we still have to be concerned at moving forward with our budget, every time we lose a student, those are dollars out of here. And our numbers, I mean, we're off of a high from, from years ago, so as that high keeps dropping, that money coming to us is going to keep, even though they're going to keep giving us the same money, if we lose students, it's not going to be the same money.
How's our stimulus, I mean, our carryover, is it going to be relaxed where we can carry over more?
And that's the other thing they, they deregulated is, yes, they're going to allow you to carry over more. So if we're only going to spend fourteen thousand in the stimulus, we're going to have other three hundred sitting there for whatever that might be, whether that be building fund things that we have to happen or staff things that have to happen.
Next year.
We're sitting pretty healthy right now and we got enough to get through next year without a lot of concerns, but and we'll, and we'll talk a little bit later about staffing and stuff, the big concern, I mean, most everybody, eighty-plus, eighty-five percent plus of their budget is staff. Well, we've got to start looking at ratios. Right now, our current certified student ratio is one to twelve. So we have one certified person for every twelve students, that's extremely low. That's a good thing in some ways when you look at it, but I mean, if, if you have those resources, it should align with your outcomes, you know, when, when we were, it was fifteen to one, when, when we, our class size minimums in Eden were thirty to one. So we've got to decide how we want to solve our budget and what we want to look at personnel-wise and those are some crucial conversations that need to happen in the next month. But budget-wise, overall, we're going to feel pretty good about it, we're still anticipating over one point nine, could be one nine three, could possibly even be one nine six depending on expenditures in the next two or three months. But budget-wise, right now, we're looking pretty, but again, it's, you got to look at your student counts and you got to look at your staff counts and make sure those are marrying up moving forward. Facilities update, the gym is a project we've talked about for the last couple of months that we thought we had a beat on, had Ramjet come in here, well, that required a preliminary plumbing inspection. We failed that plumbing inspection, had a little difficult time of getting somebody in here to come tell us why we failed the plumbing inspection. Well, we finally got that, they ran the cameras, we've got two major areas of concerns. That has been the only company to be able to come back and give us a bid at this time. We talked to one outfit today that they're considering us giving us a second bid here in town local. But, so we're in the process, we need to get another bid so we can do our plumbing project so then we can go back and do the foundation project, so we're kind of in a holding pattern until we get another bid. Floors, like I said, stripping and waxing has started, that's why we've already added almost eleven thousand to this month that we didn't have last month because we ordered all those supplies. The high school should be done by next Wednesday, that's how far ahead we are with it. Most all of our grounds have been sprayed, that's been a huge plus. When you talk to our maintenance guys, I mean, they'd already been worn out with mowing and we haven't had to do as much because we've, we've killed the weeds and that's what's growing right now. Mowing does continue, roofs, big celebration, I know that was a concern from day one. The high school, as of we know right now, had no leaks and I know at one time we had seventy-six or seventy-eight leaks reported in that building. So hats off again to our maintenance crew for finding an own solution, and what did we say, people wonder? Less than seven, five hundred?
Fixed all the high school.
Yeah, and we were thinking it was going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars. So thank you to those guys. We haven't got to the middle school, haven't got to the grade school yet, but we feel pretty good about our solution and what, what we're doing with that. Upcoming projects, Ninth Street, if you're thinking about the park and the softball field and that overflow parking from football and softball, that lot right there, well, what our police force had asked us to do this year during the, during the middle of the day is to lock that gate right by the football field in that bay and parking lot. There's a gate right there with a stop sign on it. Well, the problem that's created is we have a first hour softball class that's on the other side of that gate, so there's no easy way for them to get, they have to drive all the way around to get back to the school. Well, our solution, after talking to the city, is can't take that gate, move it, take that gate out and make a new one over on Ninth Street, think where that park comes south over there where that parking lot is, and just put a gate right there. So all the softball girls can use the parking lot, get in their facility and we can still be closed off where all of our kids are in our campus and when they leave for lunch, they're only down Ten Street where that's monitored.
Then why are they one that locked?
To help with, with, it's traffic during the lunch hour. When those kids all spread out in ten directions, now if we've got them funneled down one lane, they can kind of be there for safety and security. So that's what the Ninth Street gate is. The east side of the grade school has a fence that's in disrepair, it's angle iron, we're going to put a pipe fence in there, the gates are barely hanging on, just make that more sturdy and it'll match with everything else. The chain link at softball's beat up, where hopefully we can, we can swap some other chain link out and do that without having to buy any. And then on the south, southwest side of football, same thing, is fixing all that up and getting that set up. So those are just some upcoming facilities, projects. Definitely not going to read all this stuff, student achievement, this is what we turned in to the state department at each of our three, we had to turn in and get our learning plan approved by the state to go to this distance of this continuous learning plan, so these are the plans, pretty much in a nutshell, we're doing very, very similar things in all three places, preparing a packet, sending that packet out. Some of them are doing multiple packets when you send stuff back in, we're sending them out, some have sent it out. But other than that, everything is paper-pensable for us and we're encouraging them to take a screenshot and send it back virtually if they can, if they can't, here we go again. Again, our maintenance crew have solved a problem, we didn't have a place to drop it off and be secure, so they've created, if you came in that front door, there's a drop box. We've also got some large ones over there at the middle school, that's kind of our little hub where we do our meals where they can drop those packets off up there and the teachers can give them feedback off of that. So that's what's going on with our continuous learning plans and where we all are student achievement. And then next month, a meeting, May eleventh at seven P M. Still pumping for people to get the census done, when you're at home, got some time, get on there, make sure you get your census done, don't take you that long.
I did it for my little ninety-nine-year-old neighbor too, it's going to be a hundred from June, so.
That's it on superintendent's report unless you guys have any questions.
Everybody good? Okay, this time we move on to action topics. A, consideration of budget revision for the nineteen twenty school year.
That's what I talked about, you see the spreadsheet, if you're looking at that, anything in bold is a change one way or the other. But the very, very bottom, you see that number at the bottom, there was less than a three hundred dollar change on that overall budget. So everything's intact and there's minimal, minimal changes.
Make motion for approval of budget.
Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to approve the budget revisions for the nineteen twenty school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic fee, consideration of resolutions for schools and library universal services E-rate for the twenty twenty-one school year. This resolution authorizes a filing of the form four seventy-one, applications for funding year twenty twenty-one and the payment of the applicant's share upon approval of funding and receipt of services.
Something we, compliance, we have to do for E-rate, we want E-rate, what E-rate? And there's two different types, one of them, we don't have to pay anything, the other one is eighty-twenty, they're eighty percent, we're twenty percent. So it's really behooves us to approve this form and spend twenty percent and they will upgrade all of our technology services.
Generally speaking, what's E-rate?
Federal money for technology, think rural connectivity. I think rural connectivity, grants to upgrade your infrastructure and your technology.
Ah, and so you, if you spend twenty, you can get the eighty, so that's, that seems like a pretty easy one.
Make a motion for approved E-rate for nineteen twenty school year, or twenty twenty-one school year.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to approve the E-rate for the twenty twenty-one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic C, consideration of renewal of the LED lighting lease purchase agreement with First National Bank of Stigler.
It's in there, it's the same, we've set it up, I mean, there's just more payments, that would be one. I mean, if you would look at it, I mean, we've got the money in the building, but if you wanna pay it off and not pay the interest, that's an option, or if you just wanna continue on the plan that we started last year, either way.
So we took out a loan for lights, is that basically what this is?
Correct, upgraded LED across the district.
Oh, internal, so we're not talking, no.
Correct, and we've already done it, it's already, it's already been completed. There were some spots that didn't get upgraded, because we didn't know if we were gonna do some things bonding-wise or not, but pretty much think the entire district got upgraded to LED and we put it on a payment plan.
I make a motion, we approve the LED lighting lease purchase with First National Bank, Stigler.
Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to renew the LED lighting lease purchase agreement with First National Bank of Stigler. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic D, consideration of temporary appropriations for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Again, temporary, and you look, it's almost the same as it was this year. So when you talk about budget, what's, what are we looking at for next year? We're looking at the, pretty much the same exact budget.
Make a motion for, approve the temporary appropriations for twenty twenty-one school year, for a second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to accept the temporary appropriations for the twenty twenty-one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic E, consideration of adoption of resolution to change school calendar and ensure employee pay for the nineteen twenty school year.
Talked about this a little bit last month, this, this one-page document, what we have to do with the state is turn in, anytime we change our calendar, whether it be a snow day or something else, we've already had that calendar pre-approved, so we know, need to notify the state. Well, everybody's kind of in this blanket change of calendar right now, so this is the resolution that they've talked about. And then that last paragraph says, hey, due to this calendar change and any complications, the school's gonna continue to pay its support employees.
And does this kinda fix the problem we talked about last month about adding the extra sick days or whatever? This is, this is basic?
Because it's emergency administrative leave only granted for this.
Okay, so that, but that would fix the problem we were kinda discussing.
You're not given a sick day, they're only granting emergency during this emergency.
Does they have a hundred percent of their pay, but they got what they would've gotten anyway, I guess.
Correct, regardless of the hours worked or not worked.
It probably worked till May fourteenth or.
Yes.
It's also moving last night's school.
May eighth is last night's school, is that what they're?
Correct, and, and what we've communicated as part of our learning plan, the window they gave everybody in the state is the earliest you can stop is the eighth, the longest you can go is the fifteenth. So what we've told our students is, May eighth is your deadline to turn it, and everything has to be turned in by the fifteenth. So kinda giving them that window, we're gonna, we're gonna be here and we're gonna be available to that Friday before. You can turn in your packets on the eighth, but they are due because we gotta turn grades in by the fifteenth.
So what about graduation?
It's still.
Pending?
Postponed at this time. I mean, but what we do know is schools and school facilities are closed till June thirtieth, so unless they come off of that, the only thing you can do is July or later. And again, if, and there's talk out there that if, you know, the supposed peak was August, now the supposed peak might be May, and if that flattens out and we do something different, they might relax some things.
Cause I know some of them tend to be, tentatively set theirs for June thirtieth, and I broke an arrow, I think it was broken arrow, then maybe tentatively set for June thirtieth since that's, I guess that's the last day, or the first day that they could.
They could open back up.
The first peak's supposed to be this month, isn't it? I thought it was April, you're talking about, what peak are you talking about?
I don't know.
Okay, I thought it was like the twenty-first of this month, is it not?
Well, and then I've seen up to May sixth.
Yeah.
Okay, well, and yeah, nobody knows is the answer.
So, I mean, kinda I know what we've talked about at the high school is, we'd like to have a week to honor all you guys and whether that gets a senior trip in, whether that gets prom in, whether that gets graduation in and what that looks like.
Get it all in one week or?
Yeah, and hang tight, and then when we know, we're just gonna get a committee and we're gonna plan that thing and go. So postponed is the words we're using, we haven't used canceled, other than some things that, kindergarten graduation, canceled.
They deserve it.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a big deal.
Yeah.
So, yes, we'd like to ask you to adopt the resolution.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution to change the school calendar and ensure the employee pay.
Second.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Brett, to adopt the resolution to change the school calendar and ensure employee pay for the nineteen twenty school year. Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Executive session A, propose executive session to discuss and act upon the following business pursuant to twenty seven, uh, twenty-five Oklahoma Statute three oh seven B, one and two of the Open Meeting Act. Number one, discussion of resignation of Charles Kilgore, middle school special education teacher, effective end of nineteen twenty school, school year. Number two, discussion of resignation of Emily Hertz, grade school special education teacher, effective end of nineteen twenty school year. Number three, discussion of resignation of Patrick Phillips, high school math teacher, effective end of nineteen twenty school year. Number four, discussion of resignation of Laura Patterson, middle school cook, effective end of nineteen twenty school year. Number five, discussion of retirement of Lisa Guthrie, grade school RTI teacher, effective end of nineteen twenty school year. Number six, discussion of retirement of Carrie Butler, second grade teacher, effective end of nineteen twenty school year. Number seven, discussion to employ special education teacher for the twenty twenty-one school year. And number eight, discussion of personnel staffing for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Make a motion to be next executive session.
I'll second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to convene an executive session at seven thirty-six P M. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion, we're trying to open session.
I'll second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer at eight twenty-four to turn the board to open session. Members present during, I'm sorry, Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Members present during executive session were David Higgins, Brett Warren, Kenny Whitson, Jennifer Turner, Susan White, Superintendent Adam Bochip was also present, no votes were taken.
I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry, I'll make a motion that we accept the resignation of Charles Kilgore, middle school special education teacher, resignation of Emily Hertz, grade, grade school special education teacher, Patrick Phillips, high school math teacher, resignation of Laura Patterson, middle school cook, and retirement of Lisa Guthrie, grade school RTI teacher, and retirement of Carrie Butler, second grade teacher for the nineteen twenty school year.
Okay, I'll second, okay. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to accept the resignation of Charles Kilgore, middle school special edu, special education teacher, resignation of Emily Hertz, grade school special education teacher, resignation of Patrick Phillips, high school math teacher, resignation of Laura Patterson, middle school cook, retirement of Lisa Guthrie, grade school RTI teacher, retirement of Carrie Butler, second grade teacher, all effective end of two thousand nineteen twenty school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to employ Jill Wright as a special education teacher for the twenty twenty-one school year.
I'll second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to employ Jill Wright, special education teacher for the twenty twenty-one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Okay, this time we move on to new business.
Do have one item of new business to present to you guys. Would like to ask you to recommend to accept the resignations of Corey Adcock, Nicole Adcock, and the retirement of Kim King. Those were all turned in this afternoon today, that's the reason they weren't on there. So accepting those gives us the ability, we talked about before, to post those and begin the interview process for those three positions. Corey was at the high school, Nicole was at the middle school, and King, Mrs. King was at the grade school.
So we're gonna do that now?
Yes, it's part of new business, yes.
Make a motion to accept resignations of Corey, Nicole, Adcock, and Kim King.
I'll second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to accept the resignations of high school teacher Corey Adcock, middle school teacher Nicole Adcock, and grade school teacher Cam King. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Any other new business?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to adjourn at eight twenty-seven P M. Hang on. Kenny?
Yes.
David, by who? David, by who?
Yes.
Brett?